Okay, this is the Wasika School Board. April workshop, this Thursday, April 4th, 2024. It's 5:30 PM. And we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And for our work session tonight, we have three items. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Hutsby.
Very good. So well, this evening for our staff spotlight, Audra comes to tell me. So and I think Kelly's coming, but we'll get rolling if she makes it, she makes it. I guess that's all that rules. But anyway, for staff spotlight this time around, we were visiting about, you know, all parts of our district that we don't necessarily get a chance to talk with all the time. But transportation is a big part of what we do, getting kids to and from school safely in a timely manner and weather and different situations based on all their stuff we have going on staffing and capacity, everything impact that. Palmer Bus and Len's Bus also are wonderful partners to the district with long-term relationships with the district. So as it comes to staff spotlight, we thought it'd be great for Audra and Kelly to come visit with you a little bit and share with you really kind of some of the highlights that they do, why it's an important service and what's the relationship with the district looks like. So turn it over to you, Audra, if you want to just share a few things.
I'm Audra, site manager for Wasika Palmer Bus. I really don't know what else to say other than that. I know I was asked earlier about how many buses I have. I run about seven route buses through town. I do have two special ed buses, one that has a wheelchair, and I am currently running 10 vans. A good portion of those also go out of districts where we're transporting kids from Wasika to other programs such as Southwest Metro in Jordan, Chaska. I also have a student that goes all the way to Austin. So we really cover some mileage. We service everything from K through 12. Palmer Bus does all the sports for ninth grade and up.
So what about during the day, running all day with different routes, right?
Usually, yes. If you have some kids that start at nine something and other kids that go to another program at 12, so we do run the shuttles and, you know, transferring kids around, moving them from point A to point B safely and then getting them home again.
Yeah. Tell us about your, how staffing has gone for you and the challenges it is to find bus drivers as we're all working together. How that's going for Palmer. Some of the things Palmer's done to help meet those needs.
Well, Palmer is offering 100% paid training for anybody that wants to come and get their CDL license. We feel we're pretty competitive with, you know, as far as making sure everybody's taken care of. I mean, this is a great, great job for stay-at-home moms, retirees. I mean, it's two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. I know when I first started as a bus driver, one of the big pluses for me was that I got to go watch the sports. So now, you know, my son wrestles and I've got a daughter in soccer. That was the thing I could, and the drivers can get in usually, I should say, for free. So that was another plus that, hey, I could go watch, you know, something my kid was active in and I was getting paid to do it, which is huge bonus, you know, big bonus. But like I said, we have 100% paid training, guaranteed routes right now. I have three of them that we're making everything work though. So and a lot of our equipment is really, we take really good care of our equipment. And I was telling Charlie over there is that six of, seven of my buses right now are all propane. So we're looking at moving towards being green.
Fantastic. Tell us about the new app you've got going on right now and what the response has been to that.
The My View app that we have that parents can go on and register their students through helps parents track where the bus is while it's en route. So I know we have a couple of parents that, you know, yes, you know, we were waiting for the bus, it never showed up on time. Now I can, parents can go on this app and actually set a parameter around their house and the school of their destination that they want to go to, and it'll give them a message, hey, buses just entered your parameters. So they can set it to however far or close they'd like it. That also gives them the option too, that they can see where the bus is in transit. So, you know, if they got to meet the bus, you know, they can find out where it's at.
What was the name of that app?
My View.
My View?
Yes.
What's the feedback been on that? Anything?
I have not, the only, I've only had one parent kind of call and complain that the bus wasn't there on, you know, the day, I think we had the slow day, that a bus wasn't there on time. Like I sent out a message on my My View app and they're like, well, it didn't work for us. Well, give me a call when you're done and we'll get you on there and get you figured out. So as far as I can tell, I've not had any negatives. I've had nothing but positive.
So that's also your communication tool?
Yes, we try to do that. We do have our Facebook post page as well, but most of the information for parents will be going out via the My View app.
Is that new this year? Okay. Did you put that on your Facebook page at all?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
I was searching for it is, and I don't, you might have to help me with that later or I can call, but yeah, that would be interesting to have.
I think a big blurb went out to parents.
Yeah, we said it's out about, but yeah, but that was a while back now, so can certainly resend. Welcome, Kelly. Great. So we were just talking about, you know, how many routes do you run? How many students do you serve? Kind of how does it work for Len's as far as supporting students and their transportation?
We have four routes that still run out in the country, mainly to the south end of the district, slightly to the west. We kind of meet in the southeast and a little bit in the northwest. So it's not exactly north and south split, but four buses that run out in the country. Country kids is not as many as there used to be. You know, you used to pick up at the end of a driveway, six in this family and four in that family and eight in that family. We're still covering the same amount of miles, but instead there's two in this one and one in that one. But when Wasika eliminated for a period of time, the in-town busing, because they went with the two-mile limit, the south end of town still qualified with the two miles. And so with no town buses, all of the country buses are picking up at town stops. And by the time they are done with that, most of them are significantly full. I would say we've got buses that are on a, any given day, 50 to 60 kids in the bus on the slow parts and, excuse me, on the very, very full days, in particular in the fall. We've got a couple of buses we watch pretty closely. The most I've ever counted on our camera system is 74 on a 77 passenger. It was a very full bus. We wanted to make sure that we started looking at where could we relieve some of that congestion. Again, servicing the south end of town, it's been fairly easy to shift, you know, five over to, you know, bus number nine comes up Eighth Street, bus number 10 comes up Fifth Street, bus number 11 takes care of the Johnson Avenue Apartments and then comes up State Street, and then bus number 12 covers the southwest quadrant of town. And so to shift, if bus 11 is full, to shift some of them to bus number 10, you take those that are kind of on the borderline and you talk to the families and you explain, and a lot of them are more than happy to have their kids moving to the bus that has a little more space because it just is easier, the kids enjoy it more. But once you start that, sometimes there is the progression of additional kids going, oh, well, if they moved over to that bus, I'm going to also move to that bus. And so now bus 10 is fuller than bus 11 used to be. We might have to watch and move and make that progression go back the other direction. Aside from that, I have one bus that runs around town and picks up specifically special ed students who runs about 20 to 25 kids. There's a para that rides on that bus with her, just so that we've got another set of adult eyes watching for kids that have some needs that they need a little more attention than the driver could necessarily give them. And then special ed vehicles around town. I would say including that bus and special ed vehicles, about 70 special ed students that we make individual plans for. And that serviced by about three flexes and two wheelchair vans and an expedition at the moment with an explorer and backup. And I think you have similar vehicles, but yours tend to be more out of town. There's some kids that get serviced out of district.
I mainly run vans. I have mainly Dodge, the Dodge Voyagers. I think I have two Plymouth Chrysler's or Chrysler.
Yep.
Whatever new ones are.
So, yeah, we, historically, back when Clements was running the other bus company in town, it was split, kind of, they did the early childhood. My dad started with the K through 12 special ed and then they kind of adjusted from there, looking for as close to a 50-50 split as they could. And it's kind of settled into you do pre, our early childhood and some of the out-of-town things because I take care of so much in town that most of my vehicles are busy and the drivers are actively making sure that they're taking care of stuff here in town. So that's kind of a picture of how many kids we are looking at working with and taking care of on a given day.
Fantastic. There's a couple of things I wanted to quick highlight too. So this is a, an early morning team on weather days. And so, you know, we kind of divide, divide and conquer where we hit. You know, we're starting our texts usually anywhere between 4:30 and 5 o'clock in the morning on those days. You're covering your area, we're covering areas, and I'm hitting this dirt road and I'm hitting out here. And it's a, it's kind of a banter there in the morning for a while because not only are we watching what's happening around us, but, you know, we lean on their expertise as well for what's going to happen with a bus on this route or on that road. And we've gone to more and more the last couple of years, and I say more and more compared to my first few years here, I don't have historically what we've done always. But, you know, you kind of get to either run school or we don't. It's kind of how the recent history has been, but we've gotten more towards we're going to run school, but we may have to modify some routes. And, you know, it really is on our partners here to then contact those families, communicate, hey, we'll pick you up and meet you at this paved road, or we're not going to get you today. What's their plan? And working through that because, you know, families who live out of town, they understand what the parameters are around that transportation process. But we can't cancel the entire district because of, you know, a couple, a couple of roads that maybe aren't able to be driven on fantastic for buses. But they do a great job with that. And, you know, usually by, they can usually count on it, by 5:5, they're going to get a text from me, hey, what you got going on? And I don't think I've ever caught you still sleeping, so that's good.
You're aware. Say, usually it's by the night before, you're like, I'm not going to sleep well tonight. A lot of you knew my dad and I bought the business from him. His advice to me when I bought the business was when the superintendent asks what you think, you say, we can go on time and stay all day. I can't say that I've always said that to you, but.
Right, right. Well, it's, yeah, you're right that the safety factor is so important. And then the last thing is I wanted to talk about just routing and process for registration. So we started a few years ago sending, trying to send registration forms home in the spring with families to say, yes, I'm still going to need the bus in the fall, here's where I live, or, or no, I'm not going to, whatever the case may be. There's always summer modifications. But, but this year we're going to try to get it a little earlier, get it to a little earlier in May. And so parents can expect to see a, and it's going to be a hard copy for most of our families. And it's just easier to go to and from, keep track of. So we can get after it on the, over the summer. I mean, trust me, as frustrating as it is for families to be getting a Labor Day call that this is where your bus is going to be, it's equally as frustrating for these folks to be waiting until then to get the routes going on because we haven't heard from people, are they still around, are they still going to have, need a bus or not? Kindergarten is always a crapshoot to some degree too, but, but so parents be on the way, be on the lookout for that this spring.
We have the last two years now been invited by Ben O'Brien to be part of the kindergarten safari that he has set up. So we've got a whole classroom to ourselves and it's part of the, we talked this year, he came through. And that has been, last year not as, our room was not as well attended. This year we had a much better response. I did actually find some of the old kindergarten registration transportation forms. So we've revamped a little bit of the registration form and we kind of, you took the lead on that last year, we were taking it this year and we are just about ready. We could send it out at just about any time. And in talking in particular with John Hutmeyer, he had said the sooner in May, the better because where the kids are checking out by middle of the month, parents are ready to be done as well. So we want to make sure that we're getting some of that information home to them before they're really on summer, summer mode and see if we can get some of that stuff back a little bit quicker.
Yeah, because we want to get our routes set up for parents before, you know, because we don't want to be sitting in our office on, you know, those nice holidays and sunny days either.
Yeah.
But I mean, still we got to get it together. So the sooner, yeah, we can get this out, we get that back, we can get our routes put together.
And it's, it's been, it's been a process. It's a change in what we've done in the past. The very first year that we had them, just, I had one mother call me the very first day of school, sweet, a sweet mother and saying, you know, I don't know if my child is going to be on the bus. I mean, I said, well, give me your address. And I said, did you, did you get a form to fill out a registration form? She says, I did. Did you need me to return it? So it's been a process in making sure that when they get it, they know, please fill it out and return it. Even if they don't ride the bus, we are now trying to make sure there's a space for them to show that they're walking or biking or their parents are dropping them off or they're riding a bus. And that way we can help those that are filling it out going, but they walk, well, then just put down the name and check that they walk. And then we know that they have a plan and we don't have to worry about whether they're looking to us for their plan, so.
Questions?
Go on.
Yeah. You mentioned the green comment.
Yep.
Is there any pressure of trying to get to electric or anything from any levels? And is that?
Not that I've heard from, from my, up my, up the ladder. We're looking at the propane as it's a lot more, what we have been told, I have been told is that that's even more carbon neutral than electric.
Yep.
It's a lot more dependable, they're quieter, they heat up faster, there is still the same amount of power. Like I was also telling Charlie though, is that right now, the feasibility of using propane to go, say, on a trip to take, say, kids down to Marshall is not feasible. I get a better range with diesel because I can just pull up to any gas station and fill up. Where propane, I can't pull up to a co-op and say, hey, fill it up because you need the special connections. We do fuel here at our own site too. So I mean, we're pretty well self-sufficient with that.
I read an article about it, the district, it was in a different state. They went to electric bus and they couldn't cross the bridges in their county because they were too heavy. I don't know if it's true or not, but.
Yeah. As I say, at the moment I have all diesel. We switch over to clean burning diesel, but I have heard that some of the bus manufacturers as of 2027 are going to look at stopping making the diesel engines. So as I'm going to be replacing, as we rotate new things, and I'll probably be looking at propane because I know, full disclosure, her, her boss is my cousin. So I have the ability to have some conversations at family gatherings. She had a chance to go to one of the reveals of, I want to say, international buses. They did a, I want to say it was out in Las Vegas a year or two ago, and she decided to take them up. One of the local dealers asked her if she wanted to go along. And she had been hearing a lot of rumbling about electric buses and she's like, if that's the way we're going, I need to start learning. And the conversation she had with the manufacturers of the electric buses were, and they were very proud of their product. As it's a new thing and they have a chance to work with it, it's going to get better and better. But she said, what about in cold weather? Oh, it does really well down to about 30. It's like, well, about six months of our year, we're below 30. He goes, oh yeah, that won't work for you then. So even if it's something that's rumbling out in the industry, I would have a hard time seeing it be feasible in Minnesota until they find a way to make it more workable in cold, in cold and extreme cold weather, so.
And all of my drivers that drive them right now, I've had nothing but they love them. I've had nothing negative comeback about my buses. I do have three brand new ones. So, I mean, I had, I've had them at the fair, I've had them at the transportation fairs. If anybody wants to come see them, if you want to come on down to the shop, I would, I'd love to show them off. I love to show them off, so.
And we like that in the extreme cold weather, they start and they heat well.
They do.
Because the diesel, that's always the concern when we have those extreme cold weather days. Not that it's going to necessarily change your decision on whether they go on an extreme cold because you still have the kids that walk in town, which will probably be the deciding factor. But you don't have to worry about a diesel engine gelling out in the middle of their country route, which I've only had one in all of the years that I've taken over for my dad. Only had one that, that gelled that we had to go out and rescue. I'll take that.
Other questions?
So Palmer has this app. Is Len's going that direction at some?
We are going that direction. I currently have the, the system that when we originally talked about the bus passes, that's the system that I still have been using and the contract I have on that, I want to say expires in the fall. So Audra and I have had some conversations about what programs she needs to have in place that are, you know, the hard, the hard programs that will then work with the software for that kind of an app. Looking at some of the other options, but quite honestly, if that app is something they have and it's working for them, it's difficult to have another bus company that's using a different app. So probably looking at going that route once we get closer to the end of the contract that I have with the current system I've got. Plus she gets to work out all the kinks.
Yeah.
So then I just get to make it.
Well, there's, there's some reality to that about building a system and getting it, getting it worked out.
And I think you are one of the trial sites.
Yes, we are. Yep. I think, I want to say Mapleton might be the only other school that has it right now. So yeah, Wasika is definitely kind of the guinea pig.
But they've liked what they've seen and that's always encouraging. So if it's something that actually is helpful and simple to use, it's a, it's a good product then to move that direction. So yeah, we're looking at it.
It'll be a game changer on quote unquote real winter.
Yeah.
You know, this, this winter, we didn't have a lot of opportunities to practice.
Not that any of the drivers were complaining about.
Right, right, exactly.
Other than they really did want at least one.
I know.
It did not work, but.
I think we all, we all were okay with that, but the weather was, we had a really good weather. Anything else where they had to?
Well, I just have one question. Are there ever days when one of you calls the other one and goes, help?
Days, what you mean?
I was going to say, yes, actually we do. Historically speaking, back in the day, I had this family that was out of the district that was open enrollment. They kept asking, can't you just come and deliver to my, to my, to my driveway? We're only like two miles across. I'm like, no, it's, there's a hard line. Lo and behold, we now are colleagues. So I'm really happy I never lied to her. And therefore we, she's called me for some help on some things. I've got a couple of drivers right now that are, some life circumstances that are keeping it challenging for them to be able to each day come in and we're heading into the busy season. So we do what we can to try to help support each other, really more colleagues than competitors. So.
We've trained pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay. How about neighboring school districts like Waterville, Janesville, New Richland? Do you ever, you know, where you meet out in the country or whatever, do you ever have situations?
Some of my buses do overlap with Janesville. I do believe on a couple of my routes, I get to wave at Otana's buses as they go by. But other than that, I mean, there's no, no, no arguments. I do believe, I've talked with Eric about this too, is that being that Wasika is kind of the bigger fish in the pond here of Wasika County, we don't go past our district lines. We don't poach. So if a family says in Otana School District, they want to come here, we find the closest open enrollment stop that my bus or Kelly's bus goes to, and the parents have to come to that point. So I mean, we try not to ruffle any feathers. I mean, Janesville is a Palmer Bus location. So I do, I mean, we do work, I mean, we try to work with everybody. I mean, I, I believe I was transporting some New Richland kids in the beginning of the school year. So I mean, we do try to help everybody out because everybody is in the exact same boat of being short of being drivers.
Related to drivers, you know, there was talk more a year or two ago that can't find drivers and it's always missing drivers and it was a real big push. How has that been? Is it better now that you have less struggles trying to keep drivers or having enough drivers? Or is it?
As soon as you think you have enough, something happens. So it's, it's better than it was for the moment.
The state made it, I hate to shuffle it off, but the state has made it more difficult. I think it made it not as attractive for a driver, person to get their license. They are working on repealing some of that and making it easier. So like, say, somebody who has a Class A can come in and just go for their school bus and passenger and they don't have to, you know, take all of that information again. But they still have to take the skills test where before they would have to take all four of the written tests, get a brand new, you know, permit. I mean, to me, that's, you know, then the rumor was, well, if I don't pass, well, then I, I lose my A endorsement. So there was a lot of miscommunication, misinformation that we had to fight with that. And now the state of Minnesota, like I said, I think is starting to correct and making it a little better for us.
I think the Minnesota School Bus Operators Association has been trying very hard to work with the legislators to let them know the kind of challenges the school bus industry is facing because you've got people who have a Class B or a Class A that would like to just help out. They're used to driving a vehicle that's very similar, but they don't have the school bus with the, the light system and the stop arms and the how to stop for kids. And, and those are the things that you want to make sure that you're testing them on. But to make them go back to square one is if they didn't know how to drive that type of a vehicle and start all over was not attractive to some of them. But at the moment, like I said, we're doing okay. I've got a couple of drivers with a few personal situations that are cropping up, injury with one, a family illness with another that takes them away. And like I said, as soon as you think you're okay, you have a driver that will call you up and say, I just broke my kneecap, but I'm pretty sure I can drive with my left foot. And you say, thank you. No, I really just want you to heal and I will cover for you until you are healed and then you can come back. I will save your route for you. But I appreciate the, I appreciate the offer, but. So you try to always have a Plan B and a Plan C at least working in the back of your mind because you never know when those things might crop up.
And there's been several times too, when it's been just hectic and crazy and I just, I need to call Kelly and say, hey, I got this going on, help. Because she's, she's definitely had a lot more years' experience than I have. So she has been a wealth of information and guidance.
And sometimes it's just thinking outside the box.
Or what I like to say, what, mentally holding my hand.
Whatever, whatever term works, but. And this year we didn't have a lot of snow days, but there's been a lot of illness and I'm sure you've seen with your own families, it just never seems to go away. So influenza B all of a sudden strikes one driver and you're like, okay, which other drivers did they come in contact with? Because you never know who might come down with it next. So that, it's a little bit fluid, but it's not quite as frantic as it used to be. But it is still something that's always in the back of your mind.
Okay, Derek, do you?
Can you buy one with a manual transmission yet?
No. Trust me, I wish. I've got, I've got family that, oh yeah, we want to drive the manual. I would love to drive a manual, really intimidate those kids, you know? But no, as far as I'm aware of, no, that's an option. That's not out there.
Shoot.
If you're not for it, you could still get a manual door. With the door. And I, talking with one of the dealers, he said Minnesota is about the only state where they still actually ask for the manual door that you open rather than the switch, which sometimes has its own issues.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready to move on? Okay. Second item tonight, I just want to just share some information about the REACT, kind of what is it? What's all the discussion going on? Because for, for some of those of us, those of us who are following legislation right now, that seems to be hitting a lot of the news is REACT and what is this about and how does it impact us? And so we wanted to spend a little bit of time tonight. We went in some pretty good depth with this in the, in the DAC committee meeting on, on Tuesday night. So we're going to not quite go quite as deep as we did the other night, but just give you all some information about what is the REACT? How is it impacting our work? What are the, the thoughts that are going on right now with the legislature and how would that impact us as a district? So, and Brooke is here as well to help support this conversation in case I need, I need some relief help. And we're in good shape there with the expert in the room. But essentially, we know what is, what is the REACT? The REACT was passed last, last session by the legislature, so in, in 2023. And what the REACT is, is it's a specific set of, it sets some parameters, some from So from specific expectations of how teachers in the state of Minnesota will be expected to teach reading. Um, specifically, some strategies called evidence-based reading. You've heard, you may have heard the science of reading, um, that sort of thing, some specific training and strategy. So not curriculum, not standards, but actually teaching methods and strategies that have been proven to be most effective to teach students uh how to read and improve their literacy. And the state has decided that this is going to be the best plan for us. This is what we're gonna do. Uh, it is and following up with that, which which this is a good thing. I mean, evidence, and I've I've I mentioned this multiple times to the board. This is something that that Brooke and the team have been on for years. And we we actually have staff already through this training uh before this even came down the pike. So it is good literacy instruction. That's good. And so the law is good. There are some flaws in the law because it sets some, I would say, pretty arbitrary timelines. You had everybody in your staff trained by a certain, every teacher's reading. And how you define what who teaches reading, is it the para? Is it the seventh grade math teacher who, yeah, there's some vocabulary there. And do they want to do ninety hours of literacy training as a high school math teacher? Probably not. But who's the who's the criteria? So and then how are you gonna pay for that? And that's another challenge that that's coming through with with the act. None of that was worked out in the initial law. Uh, there was some minimal funding sources, but it was really up in the air. And it was the um, the Department of Ed will, they'll come up with something here in the fall. And they'll come up with something here in January. And now just last month, we finally got the local literacy plan template that was passed in the law last July. And so it was really some flaws in terms of how um, how it's how it's laid out. Well, the good news is for us in Wasika is that, again, Brooke and the team already on it with the principals. So we had teachers starting the training. Um, it wasn't something that came out of left field for our staff. Three hundred thousand or so in grants that that she was able to um secure this last summer for us for professional development. That will not cover all of it. Um, and so when it comes to how much districts are expected to pay, think about a district our size and and then think about bigger districts that don't have the grant. We were fortunate to have have Brooke be on top of that. So if we hadn't had that, that'd be all coming out of our dollar, out of our pocket. Um, so we're we're in good shape for that. We already had the screener. Fast, fast bridge meets the criteria, and we knew it would. Um, our reading curriculum, uh, literacy curriculum curriculum that we purchased to support that Amplify meets all the criteria. Now, there's still some discussion with the state of Minnesota, whether that's going to be a qualified curriculum for reimbursement. Because at the risk of being too soapboxy, there's only a few programs that are involved in that. And the people making those decisions haven't asked us. And and the meaning the directors and superintendents. And I, we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow with the Department of Ed to talk about that. Uh, that got moved to next Friday, the twelfth, right? Um, so we can kind of talk more about, talk more about that. And what that means is districts that haven't purchased a curriculum that meets the criteria need to do that now. And um, their the Read Act does provide funding for them to be able to do that. So there's districts, Wasika being an example of that, that said, because we're ahead of the game. We started buying this two years ago. Uh, I we we believe strongly we should be reimbursed for that because now that that's something we're able to do. And so the Department of Ed, I came up with a list of curriculums that would be reimbursed. Amplify wasn't on it. I'm still not sure why, and I don't think, I don't think many of us are quite frankly understand it, but it's being reconsidered. They're taking our feedback. They're reconsidering it. I think it was myself and about thirty other, twenty-five other superintendents that sent a letter to the Department of Ed and said, you need to, you need to reconsider this. And they are. But long story short, now we're into the implementation. And Brooke, do you want to talk about what our staff's doing for professional development?
Sure. Yep. So we have essentially three different cohorts going. We have one cohort working on letters and they started a couple of months ago. Um, so they are well on their way with that. And then we have two cohorts working through another option, which is called Core. Um, one that already started and one that will start on Monday. Um, one is moving at a quicker pace than the other is a little bit slower pace. Um, so people had two options there too. So we're trying to give people as much time on the professional days as possible to work on that. That time is dedicated for them to do um a combination of the structure of the programs are similar where they're doing some asynchronous work, where they do some reading and then some online work through an online platform. And then they have live sessions as well. So through a combination of those three things, um, that is what they're doing on those professional days.
Great, thank you. And as far as what you're hearing at the legislature right now, there's a lot of language about fixing the Read Act coming out of legislation right now. Uh, and and I think what I'm learning through the process is what we can expect is no changes to the law. They're not, they're not expecting to change any of the criteria. They're not expecting to ask us to do anything differently as far as the law goes. And quite frankly, the feedback that they've heard from us in the districts is it's a good law. We should be doing this. Um, but what we are seeing is potentially some flexibility with the timelines. Um, some ongoing potential funding to be able to do this uh sustainably. You know, we we I just talked this morning with Minnesota State in our MUP meeting about um higher ed institutions starting to work some of this instructional strategies into their teacher prep programs. Because, you know, I'm not concerned about training the ninety so on so odd staff we have to train right now. But when they're done and we start turning over staff and we have three or four new teachers every year that now have to jump into a program. And by the way, we just hired you and here's start of your two-year program. Because it takes two years for this letters program to get to get trained. And so uh graduates who come out of a program that works some of these things into their teacher prep are gonna have, be in advantage. I mean, we're gonna want to hire them because then we we will be able to be more sustainable. Because I am significantly concerned about the about the sustainability of keeping our staff up to date um over time. Um, because again, the initial training will be fine. Then as we turn people over, um, how do we make sure? Which we will because we have, we have top-notch teaching learning director who's gonna have that all laid out for us. But it's not going to be at for free and it's not going to be without some organizational headaches, right? And yeah, go ahead.
If if this is a law that they gotta have this training and knowledge of this, do you think they would implement this back into the college curriculum?
That's what that's what we're hoping for. Yeah, that's what we're hoping. The challenge we're running into right now is that and again, this is some speculation, but some, University of Minnesota's got their hands all over this. Uh, because they're one of the programs you can choose to be trained in there. Which means Minnesota State Medicaid doesn't have access to that right now. And so you can't get trained at MSU right now. And so the push is you've got, the the state's got to figure something out. And I know that MSU or Minnesota, University of Minnesota was at the table designing something they thought was a good thing, right? They were on the pilot, call it the pilot if you will. But then we has to be expanded to their universities, all of Minskew. Otherwise, if all of Minskew doesn't have access, then that really starts changing things. Did I describe that right? Yeah, I think it's it's not so much you can only can pick U of M, but they're the ones with the, in in the air of the decision makers. And so it puts, because I, we we've said the same thing and MSU has said to us, like even this morning, our conversation was, well, we're teaching the standards of effective practice and we're teaching right. But if they have to have this training to be a teacher of reading, then that might not be good enough. You've got to have a, if they have a specific certification. And that's what we need to just work into our higher ed, our higher ed plan. I don't expect them to turn on a dime either. They just can't, right? And so we'll work that through going forward. Um, you know, we had some questions, I would say, in Wasika, and I cannot speak highly enough about our teachers and how they've handled this because this is a lot of work. Did some of our teachers have to basically change the way they do teaching reading significantly. And I would say, and and Brooke dealt with a lot of these conversations with the principals. We've had a lot of questions, but not a lot of pushback and a true pushback. I don't want to do this. It's been more logistically, how do I make this work? How can I get this done? How does this work? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
I mean, whereas we have districts who are neighboring to us, who who have had more challenging conversations. Um, part of it is the professional days. I will say the professional days is a huge advantage for Wasika Public Schools because we're able to get a lot of this training in in their contract day. Not expecting them to do as much outside of contract, which some districts are. There can't be negotiations in multiple districts that you negotiate extra time in to to get some of this stuff in. So bottom line, it's a good act. It's gonna benefit students in literacy. We're already seeing results. We talked about it at DAC on Tuesday night. We saw some better winter results than we did in the fall. We're we're seeing some growth here. Our teachers are, for the most part, excited about it, the ones who are getting in, right? Is that fair to say too?
Yeah, I have a couple who are cruising in our way ahead of schedule. And when I talked to them about it, they just said, it's so good. It's information I wish I would have had years ago. And so they are appreciating it and going through it.
And so I think I think it could, it gets a little bit of a, um, it has the potential to get a little bit of a a negative spin because there's just, they didn't fund it enough and they didn't put enough um reasonable timelines into the implementation. But at the same time, I don't necessarily question that a hundred percent because in some ways, they're holding our feet to the fire and saying, go, let's get going. If I give you, if we give you three years, some of you are gonna take three years to get it going. And so I can respect that to an degree too. I really can.
I can respect that our legislature is saying across the entire state of Minnesota, we want reading to be taught this way. And I I think that that's to have that standard uh and and as opposed to this district is gonna do it this way. And this district, you know, like they've identified this is the way it should be done and we want it to be, and we want it to happen. But they, yes, they could have provided more money to make it happen and and more.
And it's not about, agreed. And to your point, Julie, it's not about content. So the standards are still the standards. You're still gonna choose your curricular resources based on your district local decision-making. But this is just the strategies with which you use. And we but we all, many of you, but then Brooke and I for sure, have been in education for a long time. And you see new strategies come and go over time. But this, I I've been in classroom seeing some of this instruction. This reminds us, reminds me more of some of the good direct instruction that I just remember experiencing as becoming a good reader through my my experience. So I feel good about it. I really do.
Why, excuse me, why is this happening now? I mean, why was this law drawn up and passed now? Versus why were we doing this five years ago or, you know?
Yeah, I think that, and I'd love to hear what your thoughts on that as well are, but my my thinking is that, two things. Um, there has been a excessive, almost over emphasis on learning loss and student recovery after the pandemic. I think there's there's still um some longing for a what-if in terms of where kids or adult, everybody quite frankly, might have been at had life not happened. And so there was a very much a microscope put on student outcomes after the pandemic. Rightly so, I think sometimes a little bit of a lamenting something that was a, yeah, we all experienced life. That's how that works. So we just keep moving forward. But that being said, I think that's part of it. The method of measuring student outcomes too, um, MCA's big assessments. For whatever reason, and we all have our thoughts, but for whatever reason, scores nationwide are not getting any better on those on those assessments. They're really not. I refuse to think that our kids are not, not capable. I mean, I've, we have some pretty smart kids. Our kids are not getting less capable, right? So there's there's some disconnect there. So that brings it back to the table as well. I also think that this was one of the very few bipartisan conversations in the last several years that we need to do something to support literacy instruction. And I think that's part of the, part of the deal too, is that, and now with the with the Democratic-controlled legislature, they didn't have to work out the kinks. They could just go. And I think it's been talked about for many years, but there, every time they were trying to work out the kinks, it kind of got stalled. And I think they decided just to go and we'll work out the kinks on, I guess, when we're planes in the air, which doesn't always feel safe, but I guess we're moving. Um, but I have not seen anybody from either side of the aisle, quite frankly, say, this is a bad law. It's just isn't, we need to work on the implementation. Anything else you'd add to that?
Um, to be honest, I think just Dr. Ed Smith referenced the science of reading, which was like a thing that just really took off and probably five years ago. And I think that was the result of social media, to be honest, um, Facebook and also like podcasts coming out and documentaries. There's been a ton coming out. Um, and just referencing science reading is just decades of research and putting it all together of like each component of reading. This is what's most impactful, what will have the greatest impact. And so, yeah, things like podcasts, documentaries, and things like just spreading the word of those things. That's, I think, what caused it to kind of explode. And then some other states prior to Minnesota kind of jumped on that. And then now Minnesota is following suit with what a lot of other states have already started to.
So I I'm always concerned when we come with one-size-fits-all solutions, you know? Simple solutions to complex problems usually are not correct, you know? So how is this gonna fit into the whole, the whole scheme of things?
Well, I think that's a good point. And my my perspective on that is that this is, this is somewhat different in the sense that it's effective strategies to teach literacy, not a curriculum, not a particular standard. Um, and so I can take that strategy and I can teach students at multiple different levels where they are in their learning. If they may need to be working on comprehension, they can need to be working on phonemic awareness, whatever that might be. But I know that this strategy, which might be some small group work and call and response type things, right? I can take that strategy and I can apply that to multiple scenarios. So it's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all canned program. But it's just working on building our skills on those effective strategies that work to teach reading. And then we we level that up um to based on the student needs.
Yeah, a big part of it is assessing where students are at and then adjusting your instruction accordingly. So following, you know, a phonics scope and sequence and identifying where students are and like skills they've got, like that's all part of it too, that differentiation is is part of what is evidence-based.
I heard you say strategies, you know, not just a single.
Correct, correct. It's it's a two-years' worth of learning to learn all the all the different options we could use with students. Yeah, with the letters program anyway.
Just the observation, you know, I think they should figure out first how to put it to college because otherwise you will be running, every new new teacher will need to go back and school districts will be in a big threat. Deep.
Yeah, we're we're starting the process of getting some trained facilitators locally, so that will help a lot with that. Then we'll have more flexibility with kind of running some of those cohorts just within our district. But yes, there's still an expense required with uh materials for that, so.
So they started, I mean, we started some of our people doing letters last year. There's a lot more this year. It's a two-year plan, so we have the new Amplify. At how long or at what point can we maybe start to measure and say, hey, this has been really good? Or, you know, it's probably not this year's test, maybe next year's, is this? How how far do we have to go down before we can maybe see the impact or really see what's done?
If you talk to teachers, they'll get that immediately, like they have immediately, you can get plenty of anecdotal stories of just the evidence they've seen and what their students are, how their students are performing now in comparison to previous years. Um, and so that's, that's pretty, that happens pretty quickly. In terms of the assessment scores, I would think, um, yeah, evidence would say, you know, three to five years of full implementation before you see the impact. But um, we're also looking at reading broken up into like the phonics foundational skills and then comprehension. The phonics should happen a little bit quicker and then the comprehension side takes a little bit longer to really build that knowledge. So if we break it down that way, we'll be able to see the result pretty quickly, I think, for the phonics side too.
Are we gonna be skewed from the pandemic wave in there?
Not not necessarily. We have enough years of data, I think, since the pandemic.
Okay.
To be able to, and our scores didn't necessarily change in Wasika a whole lot through that time. We were continuing kind of the same trend until we started working our way back up a little bit too. You know, we changed our our approach to MCA. Probably what, two years ago, we started talking more about ended the MAP test, NDA test, the FAST bridge, the classroom assessments. That's the student by student stuff. The MCA was designed originally to be a systems check. It really wasn't ever designed to be a student by student, year by year comparison, which is what our system has created it to be. But we've kind of said, well, we're we're not gonna treat it that way. We're gonna look at it holistically and say, okay, this strand we're weak in, this strand we're doing well in. Now we look at the other data, the MAP test and the FAST bridge and those things, talk about student by student work to really analyze that particularly. But I think like anything though, Grant, I mean, if I put more air in my left front tire, I might get better gas mileage. But did that, was that the cause? Or was there other things going on in the car that might have impacted that? So we have to be too caught, we have to be somewhat cautious that changing one part of a student's life is going to tomorrow change around a a test. Um, I think, are they, are we anecdotally seeing them read better? We sure are. Are the scores gonna go up? Yes, they I they will. Um, quite frankly, because they're they're in a place right now that that holistically, I mean, Wasika, we're making some growth, but we we need to keep going. And um, I think we're doing a good job with that.
Did the Read Act talk anything about testing or MCA or is MCA the right test or thing that mattered? Did it not address any test-related stuff or assessment-related?
It did identify the screener, so it came out with screeners that we need to use K three. Um, and then they will release a four twelve, what we need to do for screening for that, that we'll do three times a year. But in terms of um, yeah, what that will be, further guidance will be coming regarding that. And then they haven't mentioned MCAs at all yet. So we have to identify if students are reading at grade level. We don't know how MD says we should be doing that. Um, so we'll see if they come back for that.
Yeah, MCAs are tied to some federal dollars too with 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 the No Child Left Behind. And and you have to have, you have to have a state assessment to get some of your federal money. Uh, that's not optional. And so Minnesota has chosen the MCA. They call it that, you know? And so um, that's one of the more challenging pieces of those assessments is that Colorado or West Virginia could have picked a different assessment uh that they give. Is it as rigorous as ours or more rigorous than ours? Who knows? So you start to So you start comparing state by state, it's hard to do.
So then those those procedures will probably those those will stay as they always have been and not change like the Read Act is making this.
Right, because that's because that's federal law for that. So that really doesn't change anything. One thing with the MCAs that is in legislature this spring is currently if a if a parent and opts out opts out of taking the MCA test, it counts as a did not pass for your for your data. Right? And we we divvy that out. So what we report to you is the kids that took the test, right? But it does, it does count against you right now if a kid opts out of taking the test. And we're the we've been advocating MSBA, MSA to just just take them out of the numbers because didn't mean they couldn't pass, didn't mean you were weaker, just mean they chose not to. And that's a bigger deal in some districts than ours. But that is one thing with MCAs that is in the legislature right now that we hope gets some traction.
I've always thought that every teacher is a reading teacher to some extent. Is this going to foster that?
I I think I agree, and I think all of our teachers would agree. I think where the challenge comes down to is what part of our work and training and what of our expertise are we leveraging? I remember it was probably 20 years ago when we got really down the every teacher is a reading teacher to the point where our gym teachers had the kids sitting in circles looking at a board doing vocab instead of actively moving. We don't want to do that. And so we have to balance that out with what we're, yes, they're learning vocabulary, learning different things, but but it doesn't always have to be the same strategy. I'm on the understanding that like what they do in the 11th grade science classroom, yeah, is teaching some reading comprehension. But I don't think they're going to have to do going through this particular training. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
We have our, yeah, a high number of staff who are completing the training. SPED teachers, ALC teachers who are doing it, but yeah, I don't know that it will get to. Some districts are training all of their staff, but yeah, I'm not sure that's necessary. We've had conversations at the high school about being reading teachers from the sense of, you know, you're a social studies teacher and you expect students to read. How do you teach them to effectively comprehend that content? So from that perspective of how do you teach them to be a reader in social studies? How do you teach them to be a reader in science? But we're not expecting, you know, a high school teacher to teach them how to read.
Well, right. And that's why I said to some extent, because it might be very small or it might be all you do. But it's part of being a teacher, no matter what grade, what subject, what school. I guess that's what I meant.
And probably nobody would disagree that that training might help that high school science teacher or high school math teacher. It may help them, but there's only a certain limited amount of time they have. And would that training be more or less advantageous to more specific training? So it's kind of where do you get your best bang for the time they spend? Obviously, the fourth grade reading teacher probably gets a lot of it for maybe not the high school gym teacher or something. So it's picking return.
Both trainings are very heavily focused on those foundational skills. So, yeah, we don't need, you know, a teacher of seniors to really dedicate a ton of time to that.
Are you getting good buy in from the staff or a good report or what are they saying about it?
Just enjoying it.
Yeah, it's been great. So the teachers had two different options when they selected. They could have chosen letters, which is more intensive and longer, or they could have chosen core. And it was really our previous, we had about 10 people go through letters the first time, which was an independent separate situation. And they were really, they shared with other teachers what it was about and what it was like. And really encouraged a lot of those teachers to join the letters option. And so we had a much higher number participate in letters, which is fantastic. And we do the 30 day post professional day feedback surveys. And those have been great for that across the board. Just really appreciate having the time on the professional days to complete it. And then are really valuing the actual content that they're getting from it. It's very valuable and they're applying it directly into their work with students. So it's it's really cool to see.
I think full, full transparency of how the system works. December and January was a lot of anxiety. There was a lot of wondering how this was going to look, worry, how am I going to fit the time in? How's it going to go as we're figuring out our internal processes? And then by the beginning of February, here's the plan. Thank you. And Ben had a great meeting in Hartley to talk through some things of and and staff left that feeling like, okay. Here's what we've got going on. Now they're getting the training. They're loving it. But at first it was, start talking about 200 hours of training. That's so overwhelming for anybody, much less, you know, much less someone who's already had a full time job. And then you start thinking about that. And it, I think, once the overwhelmingness got by. So it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily not met with some, well, how's this going to look? That's that very much did happen. But now we're seeing it 90 days later into the training of seeing a lot of positive feedback.
Be good. A lot of good discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, our third item.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Brooke.
Yeah, thank you. So for for our third item tonight, Dave just asked me if we would have a little conversation about some of what I learned when I was going through my doctorate program and what we were doing here in Wasika and how that how that fits. And so just a little bit of what this program looked like, just to kind of share with you a little bit more. So I I applied in the spring of 2021 and we started that in the fall of 2021. And so it was a program that went year round, the summer semester, and it was Wednesday night courses. So in terms of Wednesday nights from five to eight, I was busy, whatever it was for, for, you know, two plus years. And that was, that was something that you had, you had to get, and Brooke's been through this as well too. You have to apply, you have to get accepted. Not everybody who applied to my cohort got accepted. So it's kind of an honor just to be at the table, right, for that process, go through it. And that's and that's school. And and with no, with all appropriate respect, I can do school. Like, we've been to this level where I can do the classwork, right? So we did that, but we learned some good, you know, learned good things about about how to how to operate school leadership, systems management, policy, policy management. Through that also, you do a couple internships. And so I had the chance to co teach a graduate ethics class over a summer with my advisor. I had the chance to lead a team of research teaching assistants one fall as part of my internship, as they were working on another piece of research. But then I think what really makes this different than other programs that I've had the opportunity to experience before is the dissertation and research process. And so you're really digging into what is it that you feel passionate about? That you want to learn more about and find some real hard data to help support you with. And as a as a school leader, how do we put the best possible teachers in front of our kids all the time? And and how do we continue to recruit and retain good teachers? Diverse teachers, particularly as our student body is becoming more diverse, how are we recording recruiting people come to our district? And I was finding lots of research about how urban and suburban school districts are doing this successfully. There's some successful strategies out there for urban and suburban school districts to help diversify their teaching staff and keep their teaching staff, you know, retained. So I thought, what about rural school districts? What about school districts that have other factors or smaller school districts, maybe somewhat less diverse, but not accessible to like a metro area? And interestingly enough, I looked up the the census identifies rural as anything that's not urban. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that, right? So that's good. So anyway, but long story short, we I found I found five. And I thought this was interesting and it kind of made me feel good about some of what what the principals have led with Brooke and and myself obviously as as well. There are five strategic practices that really work well to recruit teachers, particularly diverse teachers to your district. And that is making sure your cooperating teachers have training on how to work with teachers of color. Making sure you give all your teachers cultural competency training, having to grow your own program. Another one is working with higher ed as partners. And then seeking out people from inside your community, looking local. And and I looked at those and I so I sought out these 10 rural school districts. Obviously, I didn't, we didn't look at Wasika because that's too close to home. We went with the rural school districts around us and so that met the criteria. And we're finding that the most effective ones are grow your own programs. Making sure teachers have cultural competency training and hiring within your community, seeking within your community. Those are the three most effective strategies for recruiting teachers, particularly diverse teachers to rural school districts. Interestingly enough, those are the most effective. They're not really all that effective. At the end of the day, it hasn't been a lot of correlation to a point what I'd call statistically significant. But those are the ones that are the most of those things. So we're doing those three things. Which is really good. Makes me feel, makes me feel like we're on the right track. But at the end of the day, this is something that probably everyone in this room understands. But if you didn't live in this community, you might not, which is so the the bottom line was what works in the urban and suburban school districts might not work in a rural school district. So there might be other factors. Where do you live? What where do you get your hair cut? All those different things that are going on in a community that might be a different factor for someone wanting to our to our community might be a teacher of color. It might not be what us as a district can control, right? And so goes back to your one size fits all conversation. So I send this to MDE and I said, that's that sounds like a great plan for Minneapolis. I know it's going to work in Wasika, Minnesota. So when you allocate this money for this particular earmark that we won't have access to, that bothers me, right? That that that's harmful to our students as opposed to just putting it on the general fund where we can use it appropriately, you know, with our students. So it was really interesting, but what neat about this, and and I won't bore you with too many details. You can read the 100 page dissertation if you want. But the bottom line is what we found was that more research needs to be done to figure out how we continue to recruit teachers to rural school districts. Because we basically disproved the assumption that's what's working in metro areas will automatically work in rural Minnesota. And so I thought that was interesting. So what they said, what are you going to do with this? Well, what I can do with it is now I can go talk to my legislators, talk to my school board and say, yeah, just because just because you saw this working in the in metro doesn't mean we automatically need to throw money at that or or resources at it in Wasika. How about let's come figure out what works here for us? And when you have a when you have a a demographic that is what it is for diversity, why would I put an arbitrary goal on having X percentage of diverse staff? For example, when it doesn't mirror my my community? Should it mirror my community? Yeah, it really should. I mean, at the end of the day, teach kids should see teachers in front of them that look like them. That they really that that should be our goal. Now, I was, I I would argue where I was going to be a little bit behind because every generation is more diverse than the generation before. So I was going to be a little bit behind that. But I think we need to continue to try to work towards that, but not with unrealistic expectations. So that's what we learned from that. So it's a really interesting process. For me, it made me, it made me think about things a little differently. It allowed me to kind of dig in like, well, I would love to partner and with my advisor, we've been talking about this and send this out nationally. Send this out to rural districts around the country and see, because maybe it's a Minnesota issue. Maybe it's different per region of the country, just for some unique stuff. And not because we're trying to do anything with it other than just trying to learn how we support our kids. So I I think it was a very, and I appreciate the board supporting me on it through allowing me to kind of spend some time through my professional goals on this because it really has increased our work, improved our work as a district. Is that what you were hoping for, Dave?
So I've got another question for you.
Go ahead.
If you could narrow this all down to one thing or so, or maybe two. How has this made you a better superintendent? And in turn, how will that make Wasika a better school district?
I think there's, there's, there's two parts of that. I think, and so it can't be one thing, sorry, two parts to that. I mean, first is that our job as school leaders is to make sure we are continuously connected to what is the best practice and what we can see coming down the pike for our kids. And if you don't intentionally stay connected to some networking or some learning outside of Wasika, Minnesota, then you unfortunately lose some of that scope over time. I truly believe you could you could get that way if if you didn't specifically. And all of you, when you're working, the same thing, you get out and you do your PD, you see what's going on in the world outside. And we have our professional organizations and that helps with some of that. But this has helped me look at things a different way. In fact, and I would say it actually helped me relate to staff a little better. And this might sound a little bit comical, but some of the things that were said in some of my classes, I was only superintendent in the cohort. So some of the things that comments that were made in those classes made me wonder or made me understand they've never run a system. Okay, got it. That's a pretty narrow scope to make that comment. But it helped me understand how I need to communicate better with our staff, help them understand what's going on, so they see, understand the why and what we're doing and get some feedback, what's happening too, because they just don't, in their day to day work, which is they're doing a great job of, but they don't have the same lens as I do or any of us do for that matter. And so we need to support them through that. So that's, I think it's it's allowed me to keep my scope open and it's been helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Eric?
What are you going to do through Wednesday nights?
I know, right? I've been to more more church suppers in the last few months than I have before, so.
Good. Congratulations on fatigue.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, hopefully the weather is getting better. Thanks, everybody for coming tonight and we'll see you in a couple weeks.